We're going to give it just a few more minutes and then we will begin. Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for coming. Today is Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, and the time is now 6:03 PM. And this meeting of the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency is now called to order. And let's proceed to the invocation led by Board Member Hay, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Board Member Turkin. Let's all stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Eternally and almighty Father, we pause at the beginning of this meeting to acknowledge your presence and to invite your guidance into all that we do. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of this great city of Boynton Beach, Florida, and for entrusting us with the responsibility to make decisions that will bless and strengthen our community. Lord, tonight, we lift up our board chair, Rebecca Shelton, this evening. Though she is here with us, she's not operating at full strength. Yet, we thank you for her dedication, her leadership, and her willingness to press forward despite illness. We ask that you surround her with your healing power, renew her strength, and grant her the peace that passes all understanding. Bless every member of this board, our staff, and all who are gathered here tonight. Give us clarity of mind, unity of spirit, and wisdom in all of our decisions that the work we do bring growth, opportunity, and prosperity to our beloved city. We commit this meeting and this community into your capable hands. For in the matchless name of Jesus the Christ, we do pray and ask it all. Let every heart say amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Let's turn to our deputy city clerk, Tammy. If you could please begin the roll call.
Chair Shelton?
Present.
Vice Chair Hay?
Present.
Board Member Cruz?
Present.
Board Member Turkin?
Present.
Board Member Kelly?
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We are now moving on to additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda. Let's begin on my right, Board Member Cruz. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections you'd like to make?
None from you there, thank you.
Board Member Hay?
Not at this time.
Board Member Kelly?
Yes, Chair. I, since the last meeting, I've had lots of conversations with city staff as well as CRA staff. And with regard to our city procurement policy and what our options are as far as speeding up the process on this executive director search. And what I am asking for consensus on is the city commission is the body that controls our procurement policy. And so in order for us to look at that procurement policy and evaluate what our options are, we, I'm asking for us to consider having a, to have the CRA involved in our meeting on the 18th so that we can discuss potentially waiving our procurement policy in order to, to really kind of move this along as opposed to continuing to wait and, you know, wait and work through an RFP process that could be months down the road and really to make a decision on how to move forward. So we can't do it in this body. And so I'm asking for the board to consider having that joint meeting, to have that discussion at the next commission meeting on the 18th.
I would suggest that we create a discussion item for today for the board to have that discussion, to have more understanding before we make a decision because I don't know how much, and again, that's part of why I would like to have a discussion since I, to understand, like, how does the city procurement policy have to do with, with our CRA if we're two separate bodies?
Chair, if I may?
Please.
Catherine, have a.
Go ahead.
So I was, Board Member Cruz, so under recent, well, statutory changes that occurred a few years ago, the CRAs are subject to the procurement requirements of cities. And so because we're a dependent special district here at the CRA, CRA does follow the city procurement code to the extent that it matches up.
Yeah, I was going to clarify that. Thank you, Catherine. I'm okay to have a joint workshop. In addition, there's other, I want to talk about waterfront CRA plan follow-up from our May meeting. So I definitely would like to have that joint workshop on the 18th, maybe before, when we get here like 5:30.
Right.
Okay, in that case, yes, I'm okay with it. I didn't understand that we followed city procurement policy. Thank you.
Will 5:30 be enough time for us to deal with those issues? I, I don't have a problem with it. 5:30 is fine. Let's move on.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further, Chair.
Board Member Turkin, do you have any additions, deletions, corrections?
Nope, just addition to the future agenda for the joint workshop, just to have some discussion around the CRA plan and, you know, really looking at commercial industrial focus with the CRA away from high-density housing. So I just want to have a conversation around that with both the city and the CRA present in addition to Commissioner, or sorry, Board Member Kelly's conversation about procurement.
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve, done as modified.
As amended.
Second.
Board Member Hay made the motion to approve the agenda as amended. Board Member Kelly has made the second. All those in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Let's now turn to legal. Counselor, are there any new updates?
No, thank you. Catherine Ross, Malu, Louis Longman, and Walker.
Counselor, are there any legal items you need to discuss?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Now, let's begin informational items and disclosures by board members and CRA staff. Let's begin to my left, Board Member Turkin. Do you have any additional information, items, or disclosures?
None at this point, Chair.
Board Member.
I will say informational. Mercedes and everyone involved with the, with the Boynton food tour, great job. I think it's been a hit on social media, so I just want to give some kudos there.
Board Member Kelly?
No, Chair, I'm good. Thank you so much.
I have none to disclose. Board Member Hay?
No, no disclosure, but just to say outstanding staff.
And Board Member Cruz?
Same. No, no, nothing else. And thank you to staff.
Thank you. Now, let's look at items under information only. Are there any information-only items my colleagues would like to discuss? Let's start on my left with Commissioner Turkin, I mean, Board Member Turkin.
I'm good.
No, I'm good. Thank you, Chair.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Tim, there's no items to discuss, so do you want to move on to announcements and awards?
Mercedes, Mercedes Coppin will be presenting those.
Good evening, board. Mercedes Coppin, Business Development and Promotions Manager. First up, I'm going to be presenting on our new initiative, the Bon Appetit Boynton Beach. I'll make this a very quick update. Thank you very much, Board Member Turkin, for those kind words. I am very pleased with how this is going, our entire team is. We launched this campaign as an initiative to introduce our community members to restaurants that they may not necessarily be familiar with, or maybe they hadn't previously dined with, and to also just shine a light on our culinary talent that we have right here in eastern Boynton Beach throughout the month of September. So we structured Bon Appetit Boynton Beach into two unique experiences. Vicky, do we have the slideshow? Okay, I have this out of order. Can we start with the second to the last slide, please? There should be two. Okay. Okay, well, never mind with that slide. That's for the next one. So moving on, so we have structured it into two unique experiences. The first one is a downtown food tour. That is where we have attendees visiting four local restaurants, which includes The Butcher and the Bar, Hurricane Alley, Paloma, and Sushi Joe. And then they're having their final stop at Sure's Chocolate. That tour is $25 per person, and I am very pleased to tell you that we have sold out. We initially launched two dates for that, and we went ahead and added a third date due to the demand. And we sold on, sold out on that as well, so we're very pleased with that. We had our very first initiative last weekend, and I'm very proud to say that our very own Renee Roberts Rosario served as our guide. She did an amazing job sharing information with the group, leading them through our downtown core, and also sharing some information about our CRA-led redevelopment projects that are coming online in the downtown core. The second part of the experience is going to be the prefix menus. For that, we featured four restaurants, which was Driftwood, Rock Prime Korean BBQ, as well as Nicholson Mirror and Sushi Joe. Those are our specially curated menus that each of those restaurants presented, each of them being a three-course meal. And those are $35 per person. Again, super excited to share that we are sold out on everything except for Rock Prime, which is actually taking place this Thursday, September 11th at 6:00 PM. So tickets are still available for anyone who's interested. They can head over to our website, boyntonbeachcra.com to purchase the tickets. And just again, I'm just very pleased to just share the overwhelming response to this. The community has been very receptive to it, and we're just really happy with how it's going. I do want to share a very brief video that Take a Bite, sorry, Take a Bite Out of Boca and Beyond captured during last weekend's tour. Or maybe not? Okay, here we go. Worth a Bon Appetit Boynton food tour today. Today, we'll be visiting five local favorites with delicious bites at each stop. The tour kicked off at The Butcher and the Bar, where we sipped on my personal favorite cocktail on their menu, the Mariposa, and had our first bite of the day. Then it was off to Hurricane Alley, which is celebrating 30 years in the area. It's known for its seafood and you hook 'em, we cook 'em special. The next stop was a restaurant that opened earlier this year called Paloma, so of course, I had to get a Paloma. After that, we headed to Sushi Joe for a sushi sampler. That was the first time I was ever there, and I definitely want to go back. The tour ends on a sweet note at the family-owned Sure's Chocolate. They've been making hand-dipped, small-batch chocolate treats for over 40 years. This was such a fun way to explore downtown. Comment and let me know your favorite restaurant in Boynton Beach. Okay, and that concludes that announcement. Any questions? All right. Great. Thank you. Okay, so.
Was that Vicky Hill testing the food? Did I see your? Thank you. Messing with you.
We were pleased to have several of our staff members pose as models for some of our photo shoots that we did to promote the businesses, including Vicky Hill. So just moving on now to the announcement for the Florida Festivals and Events Association Sun Sentinel Awards. This award. Oh. Is it the top? Okay, so back in August, August 13th, the FFEA announced at their 31st annual convention the winners of this award category for the Sensational Awards. This program recognizes members' innovation, individuality, and creative cooperation. Nominations were accepted in eight different categories, which included printed materials, outdoor advertising, PR and media campaigns, photo, promotional items and T-shirts, multimedia marketing, and adaptive virtual events and programming. And over 200 events from throughout the state of Florida submitted for this. And I'm pleased to share that staff was awarded with four awards for our promotional efforts to promote our local businesses. We received second-place awards for the Spring Market, our photo op area, which is this right here, our lovely floral photos that we had. And then we also received second place for our promotional marrow for Snapshots with Santa. Moving on to the third place, we also received third-place awards for our Spring Market overall event theme and branding. Oops. Sorry. Which is shown here in these photos. And then again, we received third place for our photo that we submitted that was captured during the 2024 Boynton Beach Night Market. So yeah, we're just really pleased to be able to say that we were able to receive these awards on behalf of the agency. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is public comments. The public comment section of the meeting is for public comment on all items on the agenda or items that are not on the agenda. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment on all items on the agenda. However, the board retains the right to increase or decrease the three-minute limit prior to the start of public comment. Each public speaker shall be given the same number of minutes unless it becomes necessary to terminate a speaker's comments in order to maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum in the public meeting. Persons making public comment may not assign or donate their public comment time to another individual to allow that to the other individual time to comment. However, any persons requiring assistance will be accommodated as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act. Prior to addressing the board, speakers presented at the meeting will go to the podium to make their comments, and speakers participating virtually will unmute their device at the time requested. Speakers may be asked to state their name and address for the record. Any person may provide written comments to the board prior to the board meeting. So we are now open to public comment, and you may begin, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mike McCray. I'm kind of taking a gas tonight. I'm just saying by your information-only items, especially with A and B, having and living in District 2. Informational items is because you all have the report. What happens to us that sits in the audience that don't know what is going on? It's a report, and it also is an update on projects that affect District 2. My concern is that I see a lot of buildings on the bottom floor that's empty. I'd like to know what is going on with those, and also some of the citizens over there have reported and said that they're having rent increases. I didn't hear anything about that tonight. I'm just saying information that you all have reports on. Please don't hold it from the audience. These are things that we do need to hear about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach. So first of all, I want to say I think you guys should put in part of your budget some kind of people to go through and in the CRA district and get all the names, emails, and phone numbers so we don't have a continued repeat of what's happened with the boil water thing where no one knew what was going on, and there is no information disseminated for over 24 hours. So I think that would be a great project for interns especially to go in and start collecting names and addresses. But I'm mostly here to talk about tonight, my support for you guys picking Chris Brown and RMA to move forward with taking over the CRA. If that's the direction you decide to go, I think it'd be a great idea. Obviously, a lot of us on the Saving the Historic Andrews House group are for this because we want to see someone with a strong historic preservation background. Who knows how to turn around that and make it economic drivers and monetize it? And he has experience in that, or find some similar group, even if you don't pick him. I also want to question, what's going on with the Magnuson House? You have, I understand, three companies who want to, to move forward on any kind of restoration or project. But it says, somebody read very closely in the backup, and it was not me, they just asked me to talk about it, that the companies who do the restoration work are the ones who get to decide what happens to the Magnuson House? That does not seem right. This is owned by you, by us, the residents, and why would we want to take a historic home and let it become a restaurant that is completely nonfeasible? and let it become a restaurant that is completely nonfeasible, as we've learned over and over and over? When we have come to you repeatedly, we've even done city-level events going, okay, this is what the residents want, this is what, you know, you guys should look at, this is what would be economically feasible, and that's what you should be looking for, not what these random restoration companies say they could do, because then they get to take control and possession, and they have to decide the future of these buildings. So, the historic buildings. So I think maybe you guys should look at that a little closer. I know I have an amazing contractor, thank you, Mayor Shelton, who does extremely amazing work on historic buildings, including my 99-year-old family house, and he's done work on over 100-year-old buildings for decades up north. And he never knew about this, so why was this not made open and more public to all kinds of contractors who could come in and do the work? This guy does such quality work, my grandfather would have hired him to work on his house. You cannot tell where we had to have plaster repaired and what is the original plaster. This guy's amazing, yet he doesn't know anything about this project because no one's made it known, and why are we looking at this as a whole-house thing versus picking and choosing parts that need work to be done? So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lori Fisher. I live at 457 Northwest First Ave. I live next to the hotel on Boynton Beach Boulevard. I'm part of the 13 parcels that the city wants to get rid of some of that blithe and beautify Boynton Beach. So I just wanted to say that I'm in for beautification and helping and getting rid of some of that blithe, and I'm ready to talk when you are. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Good evening, CRA Board Members. My name is Bill Morris, 971 Southwest 7th Street in Boca. I'm here for really two reasons. One is, I have a long history with Chris Brown, who I believe has been absolutely instrumental in really putting downtown Delray Beach and its surrounding area really on the map in a very, very positive way over a number of years, and I had the opportunity also to work with him as both a developer with a Worthy in Place project for a number of years that I think has been a catalyst for great activity in downtown Delray, and also actually as a partner of Chris's in Sarasota with a project called 1350 Main, where we worked with a CRA closely for a number of years in Sarasota. I think he's an outstanding urbanist. I think he is incredibly good with historic matters, with trying to help, and he really, he's got priceless experience. I mean, he's a... Anyway, I strongly support him and hope that you would consider him. The other area that I'm interested in talking about here is, as I've said before, I'm very supportive of the 13 unit assembly there at 444 Boynton Beach Boulevard. I really think in conjunction with the Boynton Inn, I think it's such a rare opportunity for the city and the CRA to do something special there. I really believe that you have an opportunity to bring corporations that heretofore are looking at West Palm Beach or other locations, a wonderful hotel. I mean, there's such an opportunity, I think, and to mix in with maybe some retail along that corridor, but I don't think, each one of those sites individually, I don't think... I think it's like, one plus one equals about five in this case, meaning getting that corner and getting the 444 site really, I think, adds up really more to like a five or six because the opportunity there is almost unlimited, and that's... I just ask for your support, because I really think it makes sense for the future of Boynton Beach. It is something very special, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Tom Warrenkey, and I'm the CRA liaison for the Save the Andrews House Committee. We've been working on this since November, and I know we're headed in the right direction. It's just a shame it has to take this long, and right now the holdup is with the developers. So the plan was for him to have his application in in September, so we're on top of that now, so hopefully we'll know very, very quickly, and I'll be meeting with him tomorrow, so maybe we'll have an update on that. I want to thank Vice Mayor Hay for his invocations. I always feel a sense of calm and really am thankful that you start the meetings that way. It provides us all with a sense of working together, so I think you should be commended for that. I also want to thank you for including the historic planner in your budget. I know everybody on the dais agrees with that expenditure. That person, when they're in place, hopefully it'll be quickly, will be able to provide, I believe, enough grant assistance for the city to more than pay for the position, so I think it'll really pay off for the city and help us repurpose some of these old buildings. The other thing that I wanted to say is probably my most important message to you this evening, and it reminds me, when I used to be in the city commission chambers at the old city commission chambers here, right above the dais was a huge inscription on the wall. Commissioner Hay will remember what it said. "Local government is the keystone to American democracy." This is where it starts, and you're, I think you're doing a great job. The, as directors, I don't think there's any agenda item more important than that. And not just to say you support "American democracy" with a small "d," but to do something, to go out of your way to defend it. You do that on the dais, but I encourage you to do something personal to defend American democracy, again, with a small "d." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. I don't think your mic's on. Hello, I'm still Kathy. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm just a little bit confused. Is this the... There's items on the agenda that I would like to address? Do I have to do it now, or can I do it at that time? Do it now. Has to be now. Okay. All right, well, I'm not fully prepared tonight. I didn't get time to get into all the backup. But anyway, I want to commend you. I think it was a great idea, you know, great thing to proceed with the purchase of the Inn and also the Oak Street property. What a gift. What a gift that one is. As far as the project fund budget, I'm not sure, but I think there was something about Bollards or something for Town Hall or Town Square. You know me, I'm still learning. I'd like to understand what that's about, what that's for. I don't understand. And then, with regards to the infill lots for affordable home ownership, I only got to glance at it, but I noticed some of the parcels that were highlighted, particularly the lot on Seacrest, I think it's north... I'm still learning the streets around here. But it's right on Seacrest, just the other side of Boynton Beach Boulevard, right? That first street north of Boynton Beach Boulevard. Anyway, I know in the plan, the CRA plan, I think it was from before, there was some mention in there about that, I think it's that street, being a potential location for a historic district. Again, I'm not familiar with it, but I would just like to, you know, be careful about some of those lots right there on that street, and I don't know if there's been any consideration. There's a company, it's in Broward now, that builds houses like 3D printing, and it's sort of like 3D printing. I forget the name of the company, but I do have the information. And it's really cool, they can build them really quick, and I don't know if that would be an option to, you know, have them consider, you know, building small houses. And that's another thing, you know, it kind of ties in with senior housing too, is, you know, small houses. They don't have to be big houses, especially when it comes to single-family starter homes. Thank you. Next, please.
I'm Martira George, Boynton Beach. I want to talk about two items. I'm going to keep this brief. I want to commend, and I'm looking forward to Paul T's presentation on Cottage District. God knows, we spent so much time on that over the years and a tremendous amount of money, and it is so good to see it coming out of the ground and progressing in a positive way. Second thing, infill housing. As someone who sat where you sit and voted on well over 75 infill housing sites that are now tax-paying properties to the city and TIF money that generated also from that, I'm a big proponent on infill housing. You have people right here that you can partner with, such as the Faith-Based CDC, Habitat for Humanity, and others, that would be more than happy to help you with that infill housing. They've done it before, they've got a track record, and every one of those properties now has a value, a market value of over a quarter of a million dollars for the ones that have been done in the past. Reverend Hay has voted on well over 60 of those and knows the value of infill housing, and I urge you to please to continue to do infill housing because it's a win-win, not only for the CRA, but also for the city and for the families that go into those properties. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Lauren Gable. I'm a resident of Boynton at 652 Oak Street. I'm also a development partner for Hanover Company. We are the contract purchaser of approximately six acres just south of 500 Ocean. We've been working on plans there for quite a few years with, and very grateful for feedback from a number of the commissioners and staff members as we've gone through that planning and design process. Recently, we had a meeting with the CRA staff and some of the city staff to discuss a possible sale of a portion of that land for public parking, whether it be surface or future garage parking. We have been able to designate approximately a little bit over two acres that could be of consideration to the board, and I'm here today to ask for feedback if you guys would like to give direction to staff to continue those discussions and evaluation of that possible purchase in order to give the staff direction to continue the conversations moving forward. I'm here to answer any questions.
Typically, we don't do Q and A, but I'm more than happy to address this when we're done with public comment in its entirety, if that's okay with the board.
All right. Sounds great. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak before we move to online? Is anyone online?
No, nobody is online, true.
There's no one online, so we are going to close public comment at the moment.
Is that true?
Yes.
I guess I would like to input an item for future agenda, of course, to discuss the progress of the commercial tenants, the bill-out, and Hutter Boynton.
I support that.
Yeah.
Add that to our future...
While we're on that, I would like to add a conversation about looking at that parcel that was just stated in public comment. We have allocated funds for a parking garage in our budget. I think we're at $2.5 million this year, if I'm not mistaken, or I guess the start of the new fiscal year. So I would like to entertain that conversation, add that on a future agenda item if there's consensus.
At a future meeting? Yes.
Yes, not tonight. At a future meeting.
No, not tonight.
And I know we got a lot, but if staff can continue those conversations regarding this, you know, that way when we do discuss this item at the next CRA meeting, we have a little bit more information.
Perfect. Okay, so simply for the record, I'm just going to clarify that it looks by head nods that we have consensus to add both future agenda items. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. And as we're discussing this, I think we should probably look at land purchases holistically as well. I think that we should look at what the goal is, what we're trying to accomplish. As we're getting multiple offers from multiple different places, it's something that we should probably have a discussion about to see like what it is that we're looking to do and things of that nature.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. That's part of my discussion for the joint meeting, to, I really want to look at a master plan with the waterfront, then also with all the land acquisitions that we're looking at right now, so we're not just purchasing this land without at least creating some sort of vision. So maybe that's, we can address that at that joint meeting.
Well, we do have an agenda item at the end of this agenda to discuss future dates, so we'll discuss the special meeting dates and topics and future dates, and we can fold that into there if that's okay with you, Board Member.
Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items my colleagues would like to pull for discussion? I can start with you, Board Member Cruz.
No, thank you.
Board Member Hay.
No, I don't have any.
Board Member Kelly.
No, thank you.
Board Member Turkin.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Board Member Turkin made the motion to approve consent agenda. Board Member Hay gave a second. All of us in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. So, did I skip a page?
Yep.
They're starting to blend up here. I'm going to turn over to our Acting Director, Tim Tac, if you could give us an update on the CRA Advisory Board.
Good evening, Board. At the August 7th CRA Advisory Board meeting, they are continuing to work on the recommendations for ways to beautify the area within the CRA district above and beyond what the city requires. The board also had preliminary discussions on ways to honor the two Heisman candidates which were previously assigned. The CRA Board, or Advisory Board, also reviewed the proposed budget and recommended leaving the grocery store as a separate line item, similar to that of the parking garage. They're continuing to prioritize those objectives of the CRA, so they felt that was important. The CRA Advisory Board also recommended hiring micro-influencers to reach more people as a part of our social media. We did implement a little bit, as you can see with the Bon Appetit. We're going to continue to look to see what type of outreach that gives to the community. The board also discussed, will be discussing at the next meeting, additional street naming ideas and additional ways to honor the Heisman Trophy winners at their September 17th meeting. The board made the decision to change their meeting day to the third Wednesday of the month, which would allow less conflict with other advisory boards, with the city commission, and competing interests for this room. So they should have less impacts with holidays as well. So we mapped that out, and that would be a good timing too, because that would allow you to assign work to them. They would be able to work on it at that meeting and then report back to the board without a lag in time. So it helps out with the timing of things too, so just to give you an update on that.
Are there any questions from my colleagues on any of this stuff?
No, thank you.
No.
Now we will continue to old business. The first item for discussion and consideration is the continued discussion and consideration of the purchase of 670 Oak Street. Mr. Tac, can you please open this item?
Absolutely. Back in August, the CRA board was resented with the option to purchase the property located at 670 Oak Street. The property is located, as you can see, depicted...
The property is located, as you can see depicted there, just south of Harvey E. Oyer Junior Park within the Federal Highway Corridor District. As a part of the CRA's procurement, an appraisal was performed. They appraised the property in its entirety at 6.6 million dollars roughly. Per the Board's direction, we did continue to further negotiate with the seller's representative. They have offered a revised, they have a, the offer before you is a 6.8 million dollar, which is a reduction from the original. A primary deposit of 300,000 dollars with a secondary deposit of 5,000. Feasibility period of 60 days from the effective date of the agreement. A closing date of 120 days from the effective date. Property to be delivered unoccupied with the inclusion of restrictive covenants to include height restrictions, no more than 36 feet in height or two stories. Parking and the city's retention of residential development rights. City and CRA staff met in August, early, or just a little while ago, actually, August 29th. And we met to discuss the acquisition of the property. Given the city's planning efforts and anticipated eventual ownership of the park, CRA and city staff and legal recommend that the CRA and city enter into an interlocal agreement and partnership where the city takes title to the property, allowing it to negotiate as appropriate for long-term ownership. And the CRA contribute funding for the acquisition. So to effectuate that partnership, the proposed interlocal agreement is presented for your consideration this evening. We have a representative from the seller as well from city staff to answer any questions in regards that you may have to this acquisition.
Are there any questions from my colleagues on this item?
I just want to make sure that the seller or Andrew don't have any, anything. I know I talked to Andrew about this as far as it looks like the city's going to be actually purchasing, we're going to be allocating those funds to the city.
I do want to ask a financial question. How much money do we have at the CRA for this budget year for land acquisitions in total?
I believe we're at 13.4 million currently as budget.
Yes.
Vicky, do you have the?
13. It's 13 million and change, I believe, but it's.
That's exactly it, Vicky Hill, CRA Finance Director, we have 13,000. I mean, 13 million.
So we'd be in trouble if we had 13,000.
13,51,000.
What do you think, 13,000?
13 million.
Hard negotiations up here.
This is the reason, and sorry, I'm a little stuffy. This is the reason why I wanted to have that conversation of what's the goal, what are we looking to do with all of these land purchases? Because we have a lot of offers from multiple developers, landowners, to have the CRA purchase their land, and we have 13 million. Some of those parcels exceed that amount. So I just want the Board to be mindful of that as we're making these decisions. I understand the value of this property specifically. And I can see, you know, that we could have something where it could change not only the Harvey Oyer Park, but the waterfront in itself. And it could be a destination for our city or for our CRA. But just reiterating, we're limited on funding. We have 13 million total. And it's definitely something that we should keep in mind as we make these decisions going forward.
Yeah, I definitely share with me. Yeah, we spent 8 million, I think, on the Boynton Inn, roughly eight and a half. And then I think also too with the parking garage, you know, it's 2 and a half million. Is that, you know, to purchase land, to construct, you know what I mean? I think there's a lot of flexibility and fluidity with land acquisition with our budget. And so, you know, I'm definitely comfortable moving forward with this parcel. And I look forward to our conversations at the joint meeting to discuss what our vision is.
Just for clarification, we do have as a separate line item 2 and 1/2 million for a parking garage that's not included within that 13 million.
That's what I was saying.
Right.
Yep.
This is Harvey Oyer Park.
It's south of Harvey Oyer Park.
It's a.
Can you just pull up the?
Yes.
There you go. So you can see Harvey Oyer right there in the middle.
Remind me what the acreage is again of that?
It's 1.25 acres.
Something?
1.27 acres.
1.27.
Yep.
I guess, you know, I'm all in favor of acquiring this land because last I heard, you know, the Lord is not making any new land. But if I'm asked a question at our monthly meeting, like CRA is organized to eliminate slumming blight, and we're talking about the intercoastal. We're talking about getting waterfront property. I know what we plan to do with it is going to be great and all that kind of good stuff. But how do you justify the CRA dollars being spent on something like this versus in the Hutter Boynton and then the CRA? I know this is in the CRA district. But the question that the community is going to come up with, and I'm just looking, I think I know what my answer is, but I just want to hear staff or Tim's take on justifying spending CRA dollars on the intercoastal.
As a part of our CRA plan, it's outlined that we are to preserve or look at land acquisition to preserve public access to the waterways. So that is a part of our CRA plan that's outlined.
And this is going to generate TIF dollars?
I think in coordination with the city, if they are looking to move forward with an economic driver and have the ability to effectuate a site plan that would allow that, you could be looking at that potential, yes.
More of an economic driver?
We know the property has had some issues when it comes to crime and some blightedness already and.
Yeah, there was a stolen, I got a communication this past weekend of someone's vehicle and trailer stolen from Harvey Oyer. They had their boat out, came back, everything was gone. But I think the big thing that Tim touched on is the economic development piece to this, right? Because when you look at, when you look at what is the CRA trying to do, right? How can we get there? Economic development is the foundation of eliminating crime. It's the foundation of building generational wealth for families. And when we partner with the private sector, whether we're purchasing land acquisition to then create our own vision and create tourism and create, you know, additional anchors from, you know, our existing marina or what our CRA plan identifies is not just preserving the waterfront, but preserving the marine and commercial fishing industry. If you look at our CRA plan, it mentions the marine industry, I think, over four or five times, right? I think, I believe, don't quote me on this, but I think more than any other thing outside of affordable housing, maybe. And so when you talk about what's the purpose of this? The purpose is to acquire properties, to activate them, because like it was said, we're not going to get any more land, right? Land does not multiply, people do. And I think this is a great opportunity to not just execute our CRA plan, but also our strategic plan on the city side. And so I know Andrew's got a lot of ideas. I know they've been partnering with the seller of the property on what they want to look like, what they want this site to look like. But I can tell you, I know that no one wants to see dense housing there. I think that's one of the restrictions, right? They want to see activated use so where we can create a draw. And, you know, I've met with Susan's brother, Mr. Oyer, about this site, you know, just to make sure that out of respect to, you know, their family's name in the neighboring park, that this is something that they would like to see in legacy of their family. And, you know, I think Andrew's done a great job on the drawing board on this. And this is really a huge opportunity we don't want to miss. There's not many times we have the opportunity to purchase waterfront property.
Okay, you don't have to, you don't have to sell me on this. I'm in favor of this. I just wanted to hear staff take on the justification because I'm the one probably more than so than most of you who have to face the firing squad on trying to get people to see what we see, okay? And so I know places down in Fort Lauderdale area and other area that I've seen that is very successful. What we could do is, and I'm sure that Andrew and his staff have got some fantastic ideas on what can be done with this to put Boynton on the map again. So I would like to hear, if you would, from Andrew, if that's okay.
Sure. Andrew Mack, Deputy City Manager. When I was approached with this project, I kind of at first was like, why are we doing it? But as I developed site plans and we started looking at this, it just makes sense to get 1.26 acres next to a nine-acre parcel that we currently own as a boat ramp. I don't know that that opportunity comes up a lot. I think this being folded into the boat ramp park is going to be an amazing benefit to the city. We looked at some of the parking stats that are coming from the existing traffic there. There's an underutilization of this park Monday through Friday. Saturdays and Sundays, the place is packed most of the time, barring weather. So I think by getting this unique opportunity and folding it into the park, this is going to give us a real destination and we're going to be able to create something very unique and something very special for the city. Even talking with some of the adjacent property owners and neighbors, they really, I think, are in support of this. I think we have some work to do on scale and setbacks and stuff like that that we're going to work with the seller on as we're going through the due diligence phase of this. So again, I think what you're looking at was done very quickly. Our in-house architects put this together. So I'm really super excited to get some outside counsel or outside consultants to start working on this to see what it would look like. I did show some of you guys some of the stuff from Fort Lauderdale that's kind of modern and really would really activate this park. And the city's really excited about it.
Thank you, Andrew. And as one of our citizens just brought out, it's good for the public to hear this from staff so they will understand the rationale behind and the potential of a project like this so that you can reduce and cut down a lot of the chatter that may be a little unnecessary if we are explained to what is really going on and what are the plans for this and how can it benefit Boynton Beach and us? So I really appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Board Member Hay, just for a little point of clarification, if the city were to retain the ownership, there wouldn't be a direct impact to increasing TIF. However, your economic impact as far as creation of jobs and spinoff and activation of this area would have an economic impact overall.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Real quick, Andrew, before you leave. I know that along the way, there have been a lot of conditions that were thrown around and that were kind of solid on the sellers. And I just want to make sure that the city is in, nothing is a potential problem or a potential question mark that then, you know, we're going down this road. And I just want to make sure that the city, I know that you've been aware, we've had lots of conversations about this. I'm super excited to have this finally. I feel like we've been talking about this for, gosh, probably over a year, about this potential project. And so I'm super excited to see it go forward. I just want to make sure that we're not agreeing to so many restrictions that then we're kind of locked, I mean, I know that that's ultimately, they want us locked into certain things, but that we're not causing ourselves any issues. So I just want to make sure, get your feedback on that.
Yeah, initially, when we, when I first, we developed a massing scale drawing and we gave it to the seller agent, and I think they were kind of taken back a little bit about the massing. When we did the second drawing, they were much more receptive to it. So I do think that, you know, some of the conditions that they're looking for are just more to protect that kind of, that first massing. So setbacks are going to be important, but they've been really good. I think every point that we've had on, we've touched back, there's compromise there. There's, I don't foresee anything there that would stop the project. I would mention that the one item that we'll have to come back to the commission is potentially the restrictive covenant that's at Oyer Park because it currently does not allow for a restaurant. So that may be something that we may have to bring back to the commission. Because I don't know how the site plan is going to lay out. The restaurant may be completely on this parcel and the parking on that side. So I'm just, you know, giving you that one item that we may have to tweak is that particular aspect of the restrictive covenant.
Okay, but we can do that at the city level, so we're fine. Okay, great, thank you so much, Andrew.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from my colleagues?
Catherine, do you need a motion to?
Yeah. Yeah, we do need a motion, correct, Catherine?
Motion to enter the ILA agreement as revised with the city.
We have a motion and we have a second. All of those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item for discussion and consideration is an update from the Pulte Home Community LLC for the Cottage District Workforce Housing Project. Mr. Tac?
All right. In February 23, there was a purchase development agreement between the CRA and Pulte Home Company. As far as the progress, if you've been at the site, you can see that they're moving quickly. In June, Pulte launched the Cottage District website, providing prospective homebuyers information regarding the project. As you can see right there, I think that is, they're only missing two. So I think that's 17 of the single-family homes. Anyways, so they launched the website, giving prospective homebuyers information regarding the project and the steps which to qualify to purchase a single-family home or townhome through the Palm Beach County Workforce Housing Program. CRA staff has been working with interested parties in an effort to guide them to the appropriate entities to help them through the process of the income qualification. The CRA, Pulte, and the Delray Beach Community Development Corporation have been actively marketing this project. We have actually an interested parties list of about 256 individuals at the moment. The Delray Beach CDC has conducted two informative public meetings in which all CRA interested parties were invited to attend. And basically, they have provided a very thorough, very informative for people to understand because the process isn't just as simple as buying a home on your own. Pursuant to 21D, the purchase in the development agreement, Pulte is required to hold a lottery for the, to qualify through the Palm Beach County Workforce Housing Program. All homebuyers who have qualified through the Palm Beach County Workforce Housing Program and have received the necessary documentation which to qualify for the purchase will be able to participate in that lottery, which is a necessary step. They're anticipating doing the lottery here in October. That's what tentative right now. We also sent you an email, which I think is declaring the necessary steps. And from a staff's perspective, we were looking to have the Board designate one representative to actually participate in the lottery and draw those names. So I just wanted to give you an update where we're at and to see if there was one person you'd like to designate to participate in that lottery. Pulte would prefer not to have a, you know, a publicly noticed meeting in which we would have two. So it would just be easier to have one. So.
I would like to, if the Board is willing to go in that direction, I'd love to nominate Board Member Hay, since this is your, you know, on the city side, your district, not on the CRA, because it's everybody's district. But I would like to nominate Board Member Hay, if that's the will of the Board. To pick the names. How exciting.
I'll accept it. Do we need to vote on that?
No, it's not from item, we can take it by consensus, that's fine.
All right. Okay. All right, thank you. So there's none of holes and so we move on. We have consensus. And before I go to the next item, I'll chair is back. 14C. We're on 14C.
Did you already, did you discuss untabling? Okay.
We have not.
Next item for discussion and consideration is a presentation regarding the CRA-owned property at 211 East Ocean Avenue was tabled on July 8, 2025. If we do want to discuss this item, it'll need to be untabled. Wouldn't any of my colleagues like to make a motion to untable this?
Respectfully, Board Chair, we do need to set a date certain to remove it from the table or reconsider, or have you untable it and remove it from the agenda? So if you would like to set a date to talk about it, we can hold it to that date.
I'll make a motion to table it till the November CRA meeting, if that's the will of the Board.
So we do have a motion to table this item until the November CRA meeting. We do have a second. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Moving on to D. The next item for discussion and consideration is the continued discussion and consideration of the future use of 419 North Seacrest Boulevard. Mr. Tac.
Bonnie Nicklin will be presenting this item before you tonight.
Good evening, Board. Bonnie Nicklin, grants and project manager. This property, we're just following up with you since our last meeting in August. You asked us to go back with city and just make sure it could not be used as a city use. They confirmed that they do not have a use for the property. And just a quick recap, it is 0.3287 acres and it has a 1,700 square foot building right now. Staff would like your direction just before we pursue or deep dive into options, kind of to get your feel. We've presented three affordable housing. With that lot size, we anticipate that it could be subdivided into two homes. And we'll be going into the infill housing options in more detail on new business tonight. Or we've also, from other conversations with the board, co-working space or like an incubator-type art space. We're happy to research and bring back more information. We would just like your direction on which option y'all feel. And we're here for questions.
Board Member Kelly, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie. Not any questions, but I do, you know, I know we had talked about, I know we went back to to staff. Thank you for going back to staff and just making sure that there wasn't a use for that. I I really like the idea of the community co-work space. I think we don't have something usable. We really don't have that type of space down here. And I think that, I think since we have so many other properties that right now that could, you know, that we're going to talk about later for infill housing, I think that since this is a viable building that we can use and we really could use a community co-work space or even an incubator space or something, I would, I would like to go down, I mean, I would support going down that road for this because we don't have anything downtown that, you know, affords our residents those opportunities. So because the building is in great shape and it is usable from day one, that would be, my thought is coming back with how we can then move to that next step. But, you know, defer to my colleagues also on on what their thoughts are. But but that's kind of where I'm leaning.
Any comments?
Yeah, I think I I agree. I think somewhere, some co-work space downtown is a great idea. It's it's popular. You see, I think Lake Park had a pretty good success with it. And they're doing all sorts of things there, so.
Oh, sorry. If I could add, the Delray Beach CRA operates a co-working space. Teresa and I went and toured it. And while it is a larger space, we definitely could do a micro version of that. And if any of you'd like to see the space in Delray, I'd be happy to arrange that with the Delray CRA board just to get an idea too. But yeah, we can definitely bring back more options for that.
Yeah, I think that because we don't really know what the need is, I think this also gives us the opportunity to see what our downtown need is for that type of workspace. And so then we can, I think we can then even look to future, you know, talking about commercial space and what we're going to do with it without knowing that need because we don't have that to, you know, we don't have a baseline to start with. I think this will give us a unique opportunity to really test the waters on that on that co-work space, so.
I would agree. Yeah.
Great. So we'll take your directions and start doing some research and bring back our report at a future meeting date.
Awesome. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. The next item for discussion and consideration is the discussion and consideration of registration and travel expenses to attend the Florida Redevelopment Association 2025 Annual Conference on October 14 to 17 in West Palm Beach. Mr. Tac.
So the staff is just looking to see who on the board would like to attend. We just wanted to bring this up because this is our, this is our organization's annual conference. There's a lot of good information that you could get from this. The last time we discussed this, you wanted us to open it up to two of the crab members. So we were going to do that as well. It is local and, you know, we will be a part of the tour that's going to be provided as a part of this. So we just wanted to bring this up to your attention. Also, as a part of a future, in our discussion on dates, this plays in because originally we had set our dates way back and we did not know at that time it would be in West Palm. So we may have to take, you may want to take that into consideration as far as our October meeting date, that we moved back to the 23rd, so.
We won't need a travel day, so, yeah.
What is the date of our October meeting?
Does anybody on on the board?
Yeah.
Like, who intends to attend, if I?
I'll be attending.
Yeah, I'll be I'll be going. 14th to the second Tuesday.
So that's Hay Cruz and Kelly?
Yes, I'll be going to to various portions of it, for sure.
Okay.
I mean, it's local, so.
I will be saving my PTO for another conference. So I will not be attending all of it. If anything, I can attend the Wednesday tour when they come to our CRA in the morning that I could attend. So I'm not going to be attending the full conference. With that being said, I think, you know, we're looking at the schedule for the conference and my understanding is that because it's local, we will not have a travel date. And also, I don't believe that there's anything particular happening on the 14th. So I wanted to propose to see if we could host our regular CRA meeting on the designated date of October the 14th instead of the 23rd.
I'll be out of town.
On the 14th?
On the, yeah, I won't be here. So if I was going to attend the conference, it would be like the 15th to the 17th.
Are you okay with us continuing to have the meeting on the 14th?
Up to you guys.
We we have a discussion.
I would prefer to have it on the 23rd because I planned around that.
Okay.
Because that's what we already decided. So I would I would like to keep it the same.
I mean, keeping it the 23rd is good too because the 14th might be a very long day for people attending the conference.
Well, actually, there's there's no activity on the 14th. They have a board meeting. The tours start on the Wednesday and then into the meat of the actual conference. So as far as 14th, and there's not really anything there. Yeah.
I still would like to keep the meeting on the 23rd.
All right, so I'm trying to, yeah.
Well, it's it's a little, well.
We do have a new business agenda item to discuss the dates, so if you want to.
Wait. Okay.
Right, so I I might not.
We'll we'll identify this.
I mean, it's fine. I'm just saying like I I'm, I'll try to be at the meeting.
Well, we could not have an October meeting and just do a November meeting.
Let's get back to that.
Yeah.
We could just do a November meeting too.
We have to amend the agenda to discuss that now.
There's more dates, I think.
If you would like to discuss these board meeting dates now, you do need to amend the agenda. You do have that item coming up for you in a few minutes. If you just want to discuss that time.
Happy early birthday.
Yes, so so count me in.
Sweet 16, right?
There's there's nothing on the 14th. No, count me in on the conference.
I'm on the conference.
It's in the latter half.
So how many we have on the conference still? Three?
It it looks like four, but you we're budgeted for all all the boards, so.
What about the, what about the crab?
We we have opened that up till to two. Originally, that was the direction at the last meeting. If you want it to open up to more than two, that's your prerogative.
Did you have, did you discuss it with them and have you?
We'll be discussing it at the next meeting on the 17th.
Okay. When's the deadline for when for early registration?
I want to say it's the 26th of September.
Okay. So we won't, we won't get feedback back. So if, I mean, I guess my thought process is because it's local, if more than two people want to have an interest to attend, then I would be amenable to, you know, maybe having an extra spot or two because it's local and we're not paying for travel and hotel and all of that, then maybe we could open it up to, we could even do one crab board member per board member. And I mean, I I don't, I mean, I just.
Yeah. Is there five on the crab board?
Seven.
Seven? Oh. I don't know if all seven would go.
No, probably not.
Okay, so maybe we do four?
Yeah, three or four is what I was thinking. Yeah.
Four.
Yep.
Maybe just know that you can go up to that because you won't be able to come back to us to get permission to do it, to beat the early registration.
Okay.
So.
Your direction, we'll take it as four. Okay.
Okay, moving on. The next item for discussion and consideration is the discussion and consideration of budget funding towards the Neighborhood Officer Program Sergeant Position. Mr. Tac.
At the August meeting, the CRA board approved the funding recommendations and directed staff to move forward with implementation of the new initiatives for the beautification in streets as well as code enforcement. In regards to the NOP full-time sergeant request, the board requested additional information for that position. On August 18th, CRA staff received additional background information from PD for the NOP Sergeant Position, which is a part of Attachment Two, which was also emailed to all the board members. A representative should be in attendance for additional questions and follow up on that. So that's before your discussion and consideration tonight in regards to 100% funding for a sergeant position as far as the NOP program.
Any questions from my colleagues on this one? Board Member Turkin, I know you had a lot of them the last time. Board Member Cruz, do you have any questions? Board Member Hay. Board Member Kelly.
I don't really have a question. I mean, my position, I made it, I mean, I, my can, my issue is that, and this is, if this unit needed a sergeant, then why isn't a sergeant added to the unit? Why, and I guess my position is if if this unit needs to have the supervision of a sergeant, I feel like the only reason that you would add a sergeant is if the CRA agreed to pay for it. But if that unit needs a sergeant, then why hasn't a sergeant already been allocated under that unit? I guess is my, and maybe it's logistically for purposes between the CRA and the Police Department. But I mean, I guess, and my position has been very clear that I feel like right now we're we're at a, I I know that there's justification behind it. I know that Captain Burdelsky is overseeing a lot of different units. And but I I think our our downtown is also, you know, on its way to being activated. So I'm just, th- those are my concerns. I feel like if a sergeant position was needed, I'm not going to die on the sword on this agenda item, but I feel like if a sergeant position was needed in this unit, then why isn't a sergeant added to this unit? Or because I feel like it's just going to be added if we allocate this money, not necessarily because there's a need, but because we're going to pay for it. Does that make sense? Okay. Is the microphone on? Sorry, I can't hear you.
There he goes. All right. Sorry. It's complicated. Historically, the CRA policing unit has always had a sergeant, actually going back from the original inception to even the last iteration, the Neighborhood Officer Program with Sergeant Henry Deal. And in the early 2000s, I was the CRA sergeant. So we've always had a sergeant there. When we were at a time when, I think it was 2022, we were we were really short. I think we were down 25 people. So we kind of pulled back the CRA officers and had them go to the road. We needed to really focus on a core and essential functions, which is Road Patrol, Allen, calls for service. Once we started to ramp back up with staffing, we were able to redeploy the CRA unit. So the CRA unit has just recently grown to four officers. And four officers is generally our span of control where we want a direct supervisor. It's also what we have in our policy when it comes to details. If you request a detail of four officers, it comes with a sergeant too for that direct oversight. I also think from an effective standpoint, having a sergeant to to direct the officers to make sure that they're effectively in providing services in the CRA district is important. The officers going out there, they're they're dealing with a lot of problem-oriented policing unit. And we've seen a lot of success when supervisors are in that unit because it is an extra set of boots on the ground. I know that's one of the things we talked about before. So you do, sergeants are operational. They are out on the street. They are in a marked car. They're out, they're doing the the same roles as the officers, but now they're able to direct. So when there are issues or concerns in the CRA, whether from CRA staff or from the board, I think we're more effective to respond. And we we've seen great success with our community response team, which is basically a very similar version of the CRA, but just citywide. And we have direct supervision and that unit is is performing amazingly. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yes, you did. I mean, and and I I I thank you for being candid about your response. I just, I, why, so since there has been a sergeant in this position in the past and now this position of this unit needs a sergeant and and we are fully staffed, why have we waited to add a sergeant to this unit? Are you just waiting on us to allocate the funds?
Well, whether the funds get allocated or not, we'll we'll always have direct supervision of the CRA officers. And and Captain Burdelsky does a fantastic job with doing it. But Captain Burdelsky, I know he mentioned before, he has about 30 other, 30 other, 39, 38 other people that he's responsible for. I just think from just, you know, taking some burden off of of Captain Burdelsky, we are, those units that he had supervised before hadn't been filled. I like the CRT as an example. Because staffing is where it is, we fill CRT. That's additional responsibilities on Captain Burdelsky. Our Crime Prevention Unit is getting additional officers as well. K-9, we we added two officers to the K-9 unit last last fiscal year. That falls under Captain Burdelsky. So as as we get fully staffed and our specialty teams get fully staffed, his units start to fill up. And most of his units, I believe, all have have sergeants. Traffic, K-9, CRT, all have have a sergeant in there. So it's, the supervision will be done, whether it's funded or not. You know, Steve will continue to do the awesome job that he continues to do. I just feel like we're at a point now where the department's growing. This is just the pace of growth.
Thank you.
Yeah, my biggest concern, as I mentioned last time, is boots on ground. What is the split between this sergeant being operational versus administrative? Do we have an idea of what that looks like?
Yes, we do. There are there are administrative responsibilities that Captain Burdelsky does that the sergeant would be doing. And that includes the monthly reporting. And it's also include, you know, whether it's approving overtime or approving certain operations or patrol, I guess, you know, priorities. So we'll say, if you had to break it down in numbers, I would say 25% of their job, just like the Road Patrol Sergeant, would be the administrative function.
And the other 75%.
75% is out there, you know, doing what the officers are doing.
That's that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
And that's okay. And, you know, I I hope if we move forward with this, that that sergeant, I don't know who that's going to be, but takes time to get to know the businesses in the CRA, stakeholders, you know, as as part of that onboarding process because I think that is huge for this program, especially if there is an issue, right? The residents and the business owners know who to contact. So that that would be my ask is that this sergeant is is operational majority of the time, as you mentioned, but also making an effort, and not to say that one's not being done, but making an effort as being, you know, a liaison or or the go-to officer that people can connect with and contact to within the CRA district.
And and that's that's another great benefit of the supervisor is just continuity of services. I know who exactly who to go to, whether it's, we have four different officers, whether it's Officer Brown, Officer Carter, or Barrero. We know that, or Officer Davis, they're they're doing different things. But if you have that one sergeant, no different than having Captain Burdelsky, we know exactly as who, as a business owner, as a resident in the CRA district, who we need to go to.
Yeah. That's what I'm looking for.
And you're you're going to get a senior sergeant too. You know, the new sergeant would be promoted and then go on to Road Patrol, which is where most new supervisors will be going. So the sergeant you get will be a seasoned officer, sergeant from the from the Police Department. So they will have a good understanding of the CRA district and its and its and its challenges and who who the stakeholders are and the businesses and the residents in there too. So you'll get somebody who's who's highly qualified and experienced. Perfect.
Well, and real quick, do you mind if I bounce off?
No, good.
You know, when we, when we reactivated the NOP program, the CRA staff was part of that process in doing the the interview process and selecting the next person. And I feel like we have really, the CRA district has really benefited by having that holistic view of the interview process and and selecting the officers who have ultimately give 110%, if not more, to the CRA district. They are at everything. They are in, I mean, they are everywhere. I see them all the time. I see them everywhere. So I want to make sure that, you know, through this process, I
So I want to make sure that, you know, through this process, I know that it will, I, and I've had conversations with Captain Burdelsky about this, and I know that, you know, we'll be a senior sergeant through the process. But I, I want to make sure that, that CRA staff and those officers are part of that selection process to whatever degree you would allow, Chief, because I think it's important that, that the person who's selected, for this, for the exact reason that, you know, Board Member Turkin brought up, we really want somebody who, who is going to be excited to be boots on the ground and be working in this district, because the officers that we have are excited to work in this district, and their supervisor needs to be just as excited and just as dedicated to the, to the CRA district and seeing those relationships thrive. And so I want to make sure that, that, you know, to the extent that you allow, that, that the CRA staff is part of that process to some degree, just to make sure that it really is successful, because, and, and I get it, it's a lot of money. It's important that it's successful and that we don't just have a sergeant who, you know, sits in an office and, and I know that that won't happen, but we won't let it happen.
No, I'll let you know.
I know you will, yeah.
I do think it's important, though, that this officer does attend the INCA is now forming again, so we know that they're going to be coming back in, in better numbers than what they ever were. Hopefully Forest Park will, and look, in all honesty, I think Board Member Turkin, I can tell you is, we've talked about this, that there wasn't a presence in the neighborhood, and we've seen such an increase of police presence in this district. And so I want to thank you. I have noticed on the weekends, the things that are going on, and I can't thank you enough, but I think it will change the perception of, of you guys in our district to say, you know what, they actually are out there and they are working, and it'll, it'll gain the trust that some of the residents don't have, that I know you guys are trying to change that, because I see it every weekend now, and I want to thank you for it. Any other questions from my colleagues?
I just want to piggyback.
It just also showed that you guys care, you know, about the community, boots on the ground type of thing, and I, I just love to see that. I think that will open up more dialogue between the people who live in the CRA district and the PD of Boynton Beach, so I'm looking forward to, we're getting a little more organization, a little more structure, and I think it will all work out in the end for everybody. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what the chair said, when this sergeant comes onboard, in addition to the business owners, community stakeholders, some of these, like nonprofit, like non HOAs, but kind of HOAs, I think it's important that they meet with their boards, with their presidents, so then that way, you know, they can kind of be another layer of, of customer service, right? Because there's dozens of things I hear from INCA, which isn't even, you know, technically my district, but the CRA as a whole, you know, I'm a member of, and so I think having that sergeant in place to help mitigate and provide some of these solutions would be huge. We've talked about this. And so I just want to make sure that we move forward, they hit the ground running, and make an effort to meet with these key stakeholders and presidents of these neighborhoods. That, that way, you know, it, thing, they can get faster responses versus reaching out to board members, commissioners, you know, who service 20, you know, 20,000 residents, you know, per district. And so I just want to make sure that they get, you know, quality, fast customer service and response. So I hope that this individual moves forward and, and really makes that a key priority.
And, and last thing, I wanted to follow up on Board Member Kelly's comments. I agree with, you know, having the CRA be part of that interview process, and also finding somebody who's a right fit to work with a diverse community that we have, you know, with regard to residents in the CRA district. But yes, I'm looking to support this.
Yeah, I completely agree with having the CRA onboard with the selection process as we've had in the past, and make sure it's the right fit for the team that we have out there. But I know Captain Burdelsky is going to make sure that happens, so it'll get done. Thanks.
Great.
Motion to approve?
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next item is a discussion and consideration for the adoption of Exhibit A to the inter-local agreement between the Boynton Beach CRA and the City of Boynton Beach for funding construction and professional services. Mr. Tac, you have the floor.
All right. So back with our fiscal year '24 budget, there was an approved inter-local agreement to provide CRA funding for city activities. It outlined how the reimbursement work and how that would be set up. As a part of that ILA, every year, we have to update the master, or ILA Exhibit A. We have coordinated with city staff, CRA staff, multiple times. We have confirmation from the city staff that the Exhibit A is good to go. I just wanted to highlight a few things that were not necessarily on the last go-around or the previous meeting. I believe that Town Square Hardening Bollards was there. We saw an opportunity that we would be able to fund for some of the permanent installations as a part of the hardening that the city was looking to do. Another thing that was added was the actual demolition for the inn, which we would like to coordinate with the city and have that done as quickly as possible.
No, we should do a sledgehammer.
Yeah.
No, we, we're going to have gold sledgehammers.
When is that closing? Did we, when is that closing?
Do we have like a record? Did you hear us? Gold sledgehammers. Gold sledgehammers.
We're working towards the end of the month, but it may be extended.
Would it be like a, just ride it?
Sorry.
Oh, no, and no implosions either, no plunging, I was told.
FDOT started the process with the trees at least. You can at least see the whole side of the inn now, you couldn't see it before.
What's that?
When is that closing? It's 45 days, right?
One second. Yeah, it was supposed to be 45, Teresa?
Do we know the date of that?
On the first?
October 1st?
Right, but we, we may be extending that a little bit depending on how, if we have any issues, so.
You just let us know if anything changes with the date, just so we know.
Absolutely.
October 1st to close, but if there's, yeah. Very exciting.
Real quick, Tim, before we move on, on the...
Oh, I'm sorry. And also the addition of the security gate for $50,000.
Okay.
That wasn't previously on there.
Great. Which is necessary. Are there any questions on this one, or would any of my colleagues like to make a motion?
Real, real quick, on the, on the bollards, those are permanent structures to protect the road at Town Square, and those will be utilized when we have events? Is that what that, is that our...
They would be permanent structures not within the road. So they have, they, I don't know what the permanent solution is with PD, but it's my understanding they were looking at trailer-mounted barricades that would be brought in for those events to basically stop a high-speeding, like F-150 or large truck. What we would be looking at is the improvements in the side, the sidewalk that would be permanently fixed and provide a decorative aesthetic or possibly a large planter potentially, but something that would be useful in actually securing the site better when we have our events.
Right, on the side, because on the road, we already have them on the road.
Right.
Right, that come up when we have events, but we're looking at hardening the sidewalks and stuff.
Yeah, I think they're looking at something even more substantial than just bollards in the roads.
Okay, I'll go with Captain Burdelsky. I know I talked to him briefly about it, so, thank you.
Anything else from my colleagues?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And the motion passes unanimously. The next item for discussion and consideration is the fiscal year 2025, 2026 Project Fund Budget. Ms. Hill?
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members. Vicky Hill, CRA Finance Director. Well, last night, you guys changed the millage, which changed us just a little bit.
Your toes.
So instead of our tax increment revenue being 20, I think it was 27 million, 27 million now, it's going to be, excuse me, it was 26.1 million, now it's going to be So the numbers are still good. The remaining for the project fund will be 15,61,198. Go to the second page for me. Okay, here we are with the project fund. And if you approve it, then this is what will go before the City Commission to be ratified. The adaptive reuse for historic properties, we are rolling 300,000, adding a little over a million is going to be 1350, 1 million, 1.35 million. Business development and promotions, we are rolling 175,000, adding 434,000, which is going to give us 610,000. Business promotion marketing, we're rolling 130, adding 88,000. Our in total, which is what they asked for budget, 218,605. For our camp, the cameras for BBPD, we need 10 of them, and for 60,000, that's what they asked for. For beautification technicians, we need two, 147,000. For code enforcement officers, we need four. That's 308,965. Stop me if you have any questions. We are rolling 160,000 for the engineer project manager.
Vicky, sorry.
Yes.
So that number is going to change now, right, with the approval of the, or the, wait, oh, that was code enforcement, the BBPD, or the NOP programs later?
Yeah. I, I still have that money added in with the NOP program. I didn't change it because I wasn't sure what you would like.
Okay, sorry, I had...
No problem.
Officers on my brain. Sorry.
Historic planner, we put in 100,000 for that. Commercial economic redevelopment grants, we are rolling 344,000, adding 275, which is going to give us 620,000. We have a contingency, we are rolling 200,000, adding 25,000, to give it 225,000, 248. The CRA plan, hopefully when we get our new executive director, we can put that into place, so we're rolling the 300,000. For our legal services, we're adding 280,000. We have a lot of things going on, so we just up that just a little bit. And for our Neighborhood Police Officers Program, we are giving them what they asked, that 1.2 million dollars. The parking garage, rolling the 2 million, adding 500,000, so we have 2.5. For our professional development services, we have, we're rolling 210,000, adding 128, and the in total will be 339,540. Our property acquisition, which in that is 2.5 million for that grocery store, we are rolling 10.8, adding 2.2, which is going to give us 13 million, not thousand, 13 million, 51,000. Ride share, we are putting 450,000 into the budget. Site work demo, we have, we are rolling 197,000, adding 241, which is going to give us 439,000. Marina ERM monitoring wells and potential remediation, we are rolling 263,000, adding 36,000, which is going to give us 300,000 for that. The Marina Seawall, much needed, we are rolling 3.25, adding 250,000, which is going to give us 3.5 million. Master ILA items, you just approved, but we can go through them if you like. Okay, we're going to skip on down to the local match for stormwater then. We're rolling 250,000. Our property maintenance for the post office, we are rolling 150,000. We are adding 50,000 for that splash pad. And MLK entry feature, we are rolling 199,000. We added 150,000, which is going to give us 350,000. Are there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys, for working on this.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything. Now, let's move on to items under new business. Next item for discussion and consideration is the consideration of resolution number R25-02, adopting the CRA budget for fiscal year 2025.
I'm here again. Look, we need a resolution just to approve the budget.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And thank you, the motion passes 5-0. The next item for discussion and consideration is discussion and consideration of redevelopment options for infill lots for affordable homeownership. And Mr. Tac?
Bonnie Nicklin will be presenting the item before you tonight.
Good evening, Board again. Bonnie Nicklin, Grants and Project Manager. So as we mentioned, we wanted to bring before the board some of our infill scattered lots that we have. As part of our mission, everyone knows we're here to make affordable housing, and we want to take the opportunity, now that we have a good handful of lots to pursue that. Before we go, again, we just want board direction on which avenue. We have a couple of strategies we want to present to you. So this is just an overview of our mission angle. This is the very zoomed-out version I could get to fit on the slide of the property map. The, the lots are going to be seven lots, but now that we've discussed 419, we're going to go down to six lots. They range all the way up from northwest 12th Avenue down to north, what is it, southeast? Well, I can't read from here. Northeast 3rd Avenue, thank you. There it is. So there'll be six lots. The next two slides kind of provide a deeper look at them. They're identified by parcel numbers, how we have it. On the slide, you can see the lot size, the approximate measurements, the current zoning, the future land use based on our plan, and then what staff thinks we could fit on there. We propose, we propose all single-family homes on these lots. It just simplifies the process. If we get in the weeds with a townhouse, then there comes the HOA, and how is that managed? So to simplify things, and we think, based on community input meetings throughout the years, it's single-family homeownership. So based on some of the 100-foot lots, we think we can divide them into two 50-foot lots and get a couple houses on there. Of the seven lots, when that was, including 419, that was bringing us to 10 homes. So I think with six lots, we'd be now at eight, nine, nine homes. So that's zoomed-out version, and then this is the second slide, so you can see three more lots on there. And then just a quick overview of the redevelopment options that we're proposing. We could do a public notice to solicit letters of intent, issue a request for proposals, or after talking with the city, they're open, open to us transferring the property to them for development, and the CRA would help fund the development of those houses. Little pros and cons, with the letters of intent, we could cast a wide net, we could get a wide variety of options, and as far as getting that notice out, it'd be fairly quick. However, on the backside, it would take more staff time to review them. All of the, the responses would need to be in compliance with our letter of intent policy that we have in place, but it wouldn't be as standardized as an RFP response, so it'd take a little more time for staff to review them. But again, we could get some creative options through that letter of intent process. We could do a RFP, that would come back before the board, before it goes out. We could set the minimum qualifications and standards, we'd have more control and a better way to evaluate them once they were submitted. And then, like I said, the option three, transfer to the city, that would probably provide the less amount of overhead and partnership. However, we also know that the city has a large workload, and of course, they're open to the idea, we've already met with them to discuss this, so they know we are going to present it to staff, or to the board tonight. Some of the things we would want the board's direction on is the term of affordability... Some of the things we would want the board's direction on is the term of affordability. Most things we're seeing right now are around fifteen years. I believe that's what the county's program's doing with the cottage district. So staff would be in support of fifteen years on the affordability. And then it comes to affordability ranges, so the sixty to one hundred and forty percent is the workforce housing income limits, and I'll have a next slide, kind of goes more in detail of those limits. And the construction timeline, what we would like to set the goal for development. And looking at some neighboring CRAs with their RFPs, they had eighteen months from construction, for construction from the time of signed contract. And then minimum features, again, looking at neighboring cities, thirteen hundred square feet, two car, I mean, sorry, two bed, two bath, and at least one car garage. We know that's also, garages are important after doing community input meetings as well. And then, of course, hurricane impact windows and features and appliances. This is an overview of the current 2025 Palm Beach County income housing limits. As a, they can always change, but just to give you a point of reference, the cottage district project, those townhomes are going for low category, and you can see the income limits there on the chart. And then the single family homes have been moderate, one category. The partnerships we've done in the past with Habitat for Humanity, typically those houses are sold in the low and moderate one category, whereas the Boynton Beach Faith-Based CDC, they're usually the moderate one and moderate two category. So again, we'd be seeking board direction on if you have a preference on which income limits, we'd be targeting those homes to. And I don't know if I mentioned it back on the city thing, we would partner with the city ship funds, so segue to that. So this is just a quick overview of if you wanted to go down and just give us some of those target items, we'd be happy to bring back more information. If you could confirm which lots, if you want to use all six lots that we proposed for redevelopment, or just a handful, what are those terms of affordability you'd like us to include if there's any certain timelines? If you have a preference on a redevelopment strategy, we could do all of the lots with option one, or we could do a scattered and try a couple different things, if we want to give just a few to the city. And then any other feedback that staff hasn't thought of, we're just here to get your input. Any questions?
Oh, thank you so much for this, very detailed. Love the presentation, love this initiative. I don't know if the city has the bandwidth to do this, I'm leaning more towards an LOI, or maybe an RFP. I was looking in the backup that we could focus on nonprofits, or give it to the private sector. I know we've, we have a history with Boynton Beach Faith-Based CDC, they do pretty good. Habitat does a good job, too. I think as far as building wealth, I believe that Faith-Based CDC does a better job of having those owners retain that equity in that house versus, I think, I think Habitat like owns the land, if I'm not mistaken, and, you know, so I don't know if that's the best avenue. I would be more inclined to, you know, if I had to, you know, pick from one of the two, because I would imagine if we went the nonprofit route, it's going to be one of those two organizations. I want to go ahead and make my position known, and probably be more inclined to do Faith-Based CDC. I do like the idea of an LOI, because maybe there is a private contractor that can come out, and maybe they look at bundling all the properties, which I saw in the backup, too. I thought that was a very unique avenue as well. Or you can subdivide them, piece them out. So I'm, I'm open, want to see what my colleagues say.
Are these lots, there structures on them now, or they're empty?
All are vacant except for four one nine, and that's off the books now.
Off the books.
Yeah, I certainly like the idea of maybe getting CDC faith-based involved, because I've seen over the past, what they were to do by the same token, though, and I like the LOI because of the timeline and the speed, because people are in need right now. And we know that this is an excellent way, you know, infill housing is, is a way to make stronger neighborhoods, and it's, you know, affordable home, a smarter growth, and it has its advantages. The idea of turning empty spaces into thriving places where a family can, they can live, they work, and they can grow. So I'm all excited about this, but as far as which methodology, I'm still debating, and, but I do lean toward the LOI and the RFP at this, at this stage of the game. And I'd like the opportunity to do some more talking and research with you guys about that. So that's where I'm right now. But I do, this is very exciting, because I do want to ask, would we as a CRA be picking those lots, or would the city, how would that work as far as?
It is completely up to your discretion, so these are CRA-owned vacant lots that we have the ability to do housing. Kind of the idea from staff was, is it takes, has historically taken a good amount of time to get to our endgame, so because the need's so strong, we were looking at other opportunities to be able to expedite potentially, from the point of entering a contract to having somebody in that house, as opposed to what we've been hitting about, what, two to three years, give or take? So we've also have, staff has reached out or have talked to other production builders to see if there's an opportunity, similar to what we've done with Cottage District, except not necessarily a whole block. You know, if we had enough aggregated, and that would be appetizing for a larger production builder, that may be something, because Pulte's turning those homes out at five months a house. But that doesn't include permitting and everything else that goes along with it, though. So we have a lot of options, we have a lot of opportunities. We just wanted to have your input, because if we have the opportunity to do it a little bit quicker, a little bit cheaper, we want to explore that.
Tim, can you talk, because, and I am, all of these suggestions are great, I know that there, is Faith-Based CDC back up and running, because I know that they, I don't know that they have built on all of the properties that we have given them previously due to...
They had a setback, they're up and running.
They are back up and running, okay. Do they still, are they still building right now?
Yes.
But they're not finished, is what I'm asking.
Correct.
Right, okay, okay. So, and then, Tim, can you, because I did talk to you, and I also spoke to city staff with regard to, because I had concerns with the proposal of the city in-house kind of handling some of this, and I know that there is a way that, you know, maybe we can do a couple of different options. But can you just briefly, because my understanding is that city staff is kind of excited to have some of the staff take on this potential project, not necessarily maybe to all of the properties, but maybe to a couple of them, to give experience to some of our city staff that they wouldn't normally get in building? So can you just briefly explain, you know, for the benefit of the board, what that conversation has been like, and what, how that would work, and, you know?
We don't have anything specifically detailed yet. We have been talking in concept only, but the idea is dispose the property to the city. The CRA would basically fund the design, the construction, staff would oversee the construction administration of it to the point, and then the city could dispose of it within their parameters. So they would be able to oversee the construction, minimize a little bit of the overhead that goes typically to the developer, that would actually increase the, and price to the potential homeowner. Yeah, and affect our affordability. Correct.
So, so that's one of the reasons I really liked that idea, is because we were, it would, it would decrease the overhead, because we would be doing it in-house, and maybe as an experiment, we do a couple, you know, one or two, just for experiment purposes. But I know, you know, most, there's many developers that are trying to meet their workforce housing needs right now, and so I feel like, kind of like what happened with the Cottage District, is we'll end up likely getting some, some financial recovery from these lots, you know, in any sort of competitive process. So I am interested and open to that. The only property that I almost would rather us hold back, just because of its location, is the one oh six northeast third avenue, because it is empty, it's fenced off, but it's right, it's literally a half a block from Boynton Beach Boulevard and Seacrest. And I feel like once we've really activated that intersection, that, that, the market and all of those other commercial properties could end up becoming something that we really could activate, and with that extra parcel that's not going to be a single family home, we really could do something with that whole L-shaped corner. And so I almost want to hold that back just until we start really, you know, so we can look at how, I mean, that's one of our main corners, you know, intersections in the city, and so I would hate to, you know, turn that into a single family home, and then, and then be kicking ourselves wishing that we had held out, because, you know, then the market and the dry cleaner and the liquor store and all of that closes down, and we, you know, we acquire it, and it would be great if we had that parcel that we were sitting on for a little bit longer. So that, I'm kind of, my desire would be to hold that one back, just for that reason, because it is a block, you know, from, it backs up to commercial property, that I think we could utilize that sometime down the future. But otherwise, I am excited, this is something, Tim, that you and I have spoken about, is kind of grouping some of these lots together and seeing, you know, throwing it out there and seeing what, because there are developers that are trying to meet their workforce housing requirements, because they're building these huge neighborhoods out off of four forty-one and all over the place. And so I really think we, we could have an opportunity to maximize, you know, you know, recovery, but then maybe also give the city staff an opportunity to test the waters of building, too. So those are my thoughts on this item, but I'm, I'm excited to finally see some of our properties move forward.
No, I, I agree. That's, that's behind the convenience store, right? Yeah. So three through seven, is that, is that what it is? Three through seven? Because one is off the table and two is... Yeah, so, I mean, I'm okay to do an LOI. Do we, do we have to decide with the bundle now, or can?
No.
They can offer...
I'd like to.
It's completely to your, I mean, what you guys want to do, I mean, you could literally take one, say, let's try this as a pilot with the city. You could take the other group, put it out to LOI, you could be looking at, as opposed to looking at the, you know, nonprofit, you could be looking at potentially a production builder looking to offset, you know, the workforce housing requirement. It's completely up to you, you can see how that comes back. If that's unsuccessful, then we can look at other avenues.
And we scrap it, right, and we try something else.
So, I mean, you have complete control over what this looks like. It's just, you know, now we're getting to a point where amassing a decent portion that is going to be looking potentially favorable, so.
I do want to thank staff for looking into this. I know it's a lot of research, and it's very much appreciated, really gives us insight into our current inventory and opportunities that we have for the future. And remember, Kelly, you asked a question about, you know, has, have those projects been completed, and that was the same concern that I was thinking about. You know, sometimes things happen, and it gets challenging to finish certain projects with certain situations, so that's something I was also thinking about. For me, I would support looking into maybe testing the waters with maybe one or two lots, and seeing maybe an LOI for one, and I don't, I don't know how I feel about the city, like using our staff to, to build homes in itself, I don't, unless there's plenty of time to do things, we have a lot to do, I don't, I don't know, it just gives me liability concerns. So.
We'll just speak to staff, because they're, they were excited about this opportunity. So I would just challenge you to speak to staff and have those conversations, because they wouldn't be doing the hammering and the nailing and the, you know.
I, I would like, I mean, if we do, if you want to entertain that option, I'd like to coordinate more with the, with the city and get it nailed down a little bit better.
What it'll look like, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I feel that, I agree with what's been stated, and I don't think we have any that falls into this category, but what I do not want is what's, what we have on the west of Denson Park, where we have those houses turned sideways, and one bowling ball would knock them all down, but I don't think we have any that falls into the twenty-five foot area. We don't have any like this. Let's just make sure that we keep that on the books as, as a no-no of set a minimum for the lot size, or whatever we add to this going forward.
Right.
Because I, I really, I must have been asleep when that got passed, but, because those are, those are terrible, okay?
I think those were part of the auction, we did not, we couldn't compete with the prices on the auction, and those were private developed, so outside of the CRA.
Again?
Yeah.
Okay.
I get it. We would probably be taking a look at two lots and then looking at a fifty-foot lot.
Thank you very much.
With consideration, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on, the next item for discussion and consideration is the 2025 CRA board meeting dates. So we will revisit this now, whether it's the twenty-third, whether...
Just before you move on, would you like us to bring this back, coordinate with the city a little bit more?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'd like a chance to talk to the city staff.
Maybe a proposed, you know, some, I know we have...
Did you want us to bring back an LOI that would target?
Yeah, sample, so we can see what it would look like. Right, yeah.
On the eighteenth?
No.
No?
Not on the eighteenth.
Geez, that's like short time, we have to review these agendas, review city agenda.
All right, tranquilo.
Eighteenth is kind of short.
Coming up.
Heavy. I don't know. It's heavy. Yeah. Okay.
So do we move it to the October meeting or the November meeting?
October's fine for me.
October, October.
We're going to decide that now.
Decide that right now, so...
Is that enough time for staff?
If we leave it on the twenty...
I'd like to, I'd like to bring this back in November, because we're going to be coordinating with the city as well as developing an LOI, so I think November would be probably...
November?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so let's decide what we want to do for October.
October twenty-second?
Is that a Wednesday?
A Wednesday.
Well...
There's something that day.
I don't see anything on the city calendar.
In regards to agenda item fifteen C, your current board meeting slated for October twenty-third.
Right.
The subsequent meeting is in November tenth, so to get a turnaround on the agenda, it's very limited for staff. I, I don't know if there's anything necessarily going to be pressing, based upon that timeframe, whether you would like to either entertain moving the October meeting back forward, that's a potential. If you, if you feel that's not in conflict with the conference, or if there's in conflict with something else, I don't know. But you could also look at potentially canceling. If you did move it forward, right now, we were supposed to have a special meeting before the city commission to discuss the executive director position and contract.
That was on the seventh, right?
Right. So if you did move it back to the fourteenth, and I thought, I heard somebody say, you could potentially move that to a regular meeting on the fourteenth, if you wanted to.
I mean, I'm okay with if we don't have anything pressing to just, I mean, just do it in November if we, because I don't want to necessarily move it...
Because then we will still be having the special meetings in October regardless.
Right, right.
Okay, so would we like to do that?
That's my...
Then you can enjoy your birthday.
Just moving it, no, no October meeting, just November.
Right.
Because we have the special meetings anyways in October, so let's just move everything to November.
October twenty-third, right.
Fortunately, if you'll allow me to assist with a motion on this, just to capture the discussions that we've had this evening. So as I understand it, and this is for your, for your consideration, the motion would be to call for a special meeting on September eighteenth to discuss procurement of an executive director, a commercial industrial focus and land acquisition planning generally. That meeting would take place at five thirty. A special meeting would still continue on October seventh for any follow-up related to the executive director. The meeting in October would be canceled, and regular meetings would resume in November 2025.
Perfect.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. We have a motion to adjourn and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Everyone have a good evening.
Go rest.
I think they're going to walk me home. Um, I think they're gonna walk me home.